Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the open forum meeting of the Board of Education to order. Ms. Chisinski, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Busenberg?
Here.
Ms. Derrigan?
Here.
Ms. Sarabini?
Here.
Ms. Solon?
Here.
Ms. Sadi?
Thank you so much. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again. It is a pleasure to welcome you all here to this third follow-up forum. Well, the second follow-up forum, actually. As you all know, we had our first forum on March 18th, and we did have a second forum in May, and this is now the third forum that we're having. And the purpose tonight is to, one, provide you with some information on, you know, sort of what has been going on and the progress that we've made, and sort of just bring you up to date on where things stand. Also, you will have an opportunity to, you know, make whatever comments, you know, address the Board of Education and the superintendent with any comments, questions, concerns that you may have. Depending on, you know, how many people want to speak, you know, I'm not intending to necessarily limit the amount of time you have, but I would, I would ask that you be aware of people, you know, the number of people that may want to speak after you, and limit your comments accordingly. If we can address questions or concerns that you have at this forum, we will, you know, the superintendent will do so, and if we need to follow up and get back to you after this meeting's over, we can do that as well. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Solan, who will be just giving us sort of a short presentation overview.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Allen. I, you know, echo your welcome to everybody here tonight. This, we always appreciate an opportunity to improve ourselves as a school system, and that's how, you know, I'm approaching this evening's forum. I think that, you know, there's certainly a lot of, a lot of validation of the things that we do as a school system. We do a lot of things incredibly well, but you can never support students enough. So, you know, in that vein, we are constantly looking at the programs that we offer and always trying to find ways to improve on that to ensure that all of our students have a positive experience. You know, one of the things, it's pretty simple, it's, you know, basic, your basic college psychology class, but it's something that we often turn back to is Maslow's hierarchy needs. Kids can't really be successful until their most basic needs are met, you know, whether they be food and shelter, or as you, you climb up the pyramid, I'm sure you can picture it in your mind, climb up the pyramid to things like belonging and self-esteem before you can learn and achieve. And our students are achieving at record-high levels, but we also need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of every individual child. And so that's, you know, why over the last six months or so, we've doubled our efforts in making sure that we communicate with families around what, the information that we can share and can't share when your child may be going through a difficult time. We've doubled down on our efforts to communicate if your child is having difficulty with a peer, how to report that to us, whether it be directly or anonymously. We've reported out, you know, basically how the flow of that investigation process goes, what we can and can't share by law. And so, you know, at that initial March 18th forum, we took some of that feedback, all of the feedback we reviewed, and attempted to continue to improve ourselves as a school system. So, I think we've, you know, made significant strides in that direction, and I think also if, you know, you want to look on our website under the Board of Ed section for materials for tonight's meeting, there's, there is data. We provide all of our students with a school climate survey every two years, so I included there the data for the last three years on, you know, questions really pertaining to school environment and stuff, the things that we're looking at to continue to improve what we do for our kids. There's also all the disciplinary data for every disciplinary infraction that's reported to the state over the last three years. And if you look at the data, last year we had 207 disciplinary infractions. The year before that, it was, you know, unbelievably exactly 207. And so, if you, you know, if you want to look through that data, that information is there, and as always, I encourage you to reach out to myself or building principals or our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Solano, we'd be happy to try and to support you. But tonight isn't really about, you know, me making a presentation as much as it is to, you know, hear feedback in the community, so I'll pass it back to Chairman Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. Okay, so now we will take public comment, so if anyone wants to address the Board of Ed, please step up to the podium. When you do, please give a, provide your name and address, and we're happy to hear from you, so.
Hello.
Hi. Tim White, 11 Colonial Court. So, my daughter started in the school system probably two weeks ago. Kindergarten class, Ms. Gambardala, formerly known as Ms. Quigley. She loves it. Thank you very much to all of you. You have a big team, what is it, 600 or 700 staff? Faculty, 600? I think the overwhelming majority of people in your team are good. You're going to have a couple people who probably are not ideal, and it reminds me of a situation that happened about 15 years ago when I was on the council. It was a teacher at the high school who was inviting kids, this was in the newspapers, inviting kids back to his house, something along these lines, giving them booze, pot. Got arrested and couldn't figure out what the, why the teacher was around after having done all this. And ultimately, the Board of Ed wanted to take action, the superintendent wanted to take action, and what we were told was that the union leadership was doing what union leadership does, is defending their members. I appreciate that. I respect the process. I also think that there's a time and a place where that just doesn't cut it. When the students are in fear of a particular teacher, that's a real problem. And then, speaking hypothetically, if a teacher got arrested for assaulting police officers, I think that would indicate a bigger issue there. So, I asked the board, when it comes to the very few faculty, staff that you have that are a problem, and no doubt with 600 people, you must have a problem or two, that you stand resolute and make that change, because kids, if such a situation existed, and it's not with my daughter, but if such a situation existed, you, they just shouldn't be in that situation in fear of a teacher. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Yeah, I just want to address that real quick, because I think that there could be misconstrued information there. I know your situation was hypothetical, but I will indicate that our teachers' union is incredibly supportive. We have a mutually respectful relationship, and, you know, the Connecticut law really dictates most employment stuff, you know, particularly as it relates to teachers. So, that's, you know, maybe the first place that we need to look in terms of any concerns like that. Thanks.
Jeff Nizali, 512 Cardinal Lane. Just a quick question. When I came spoke in front of you in June and asked about, I won't say the postponement, because I understand it wasn't postponed, but the scheduling of a follow-up forum, what we were told, and I'm looking at the minutes from the meeting, that you didn't feel comfortable having it until September, when you received the Safe School Climate Data. Superintendent indicated that it's online for folks to read, so I guess my question is, will that data be discussed tonight? Because the rationale for not having the form earlier in June before the school ended was because you didn't have that, and if that was the reason, is it going to be discussed tonight?
Is that, okay, that's your question?
That's my question, yes.
You know, we don't have copies of the, everything that's online on the website. I don't know if, do you have a specific question about an aspect of the data?
No, I just haven't seen what's online yet, and again, it was represented that we would have the form and it would be discussed, because you'd have the data by now. So, I just wanted to know if it's going to be discussed.
Well, we certainly can't.
Well, there's more data beyond that Safe School Climate Survey data that is now available too. We have end-of-year disciplinary data. I just mentioned that it was, the number of incidents was identical to last year. The, all that data is also available, but it, you know, this isn't, it's, I don't have a formal presentation on that data.
Do you plan on having one? Because again, I just think that rather than having individuals disseminate some things that they may not understand, it may be a good idea for this board to present the data, the data that you can, because again, there's some confidential data, but present the data to the public so that they can understand it.
Yeah, the data, as it's outlined on, on the website, I couldn't present it in a, in a clearer manner, I don't think, than what it is. You know, it's, it's pretty clear in terms of incidents by month. The, the student feedback data is there as well, so I, I don't know that I could present it more clearly than is available now.
So, but again, rather than the board, than yourself or the board discussing it as a group with the public, we're just going to disseminate it, and what we find is what we find, or perceptions are there?
So, I think that we can certainly talk about, and maybe have a presentation at our, at a board meeting, upcoming board meeting, that sort of presents that in a, you know, just puts it out there, and, and we can discuss it. I mean, I know all of the board members have been given access to that information, and, but you're right, we haven't yet, you know, we haven't sat down and talked about it specifically, and if, I have no problem, you know, saying that we can definitely have a more detailed, specific presentation about the data that we found. But overall, I think that, you know, there, there was no spike in the, in the overall incidents over the course of last year, as Mr. Solan mentioned. The number of, you know, the, the way that the incidents break out, and the types of incidents and which schools there are, occurred in, there might have been some fluctuation, but overall, if we were expecting to see some, you know, significant problem last year versus the year before, you don't see that in the data. But I, I don't have any problem, you know, getting more detailed information to, you know, in front of us for, at a meeting that comes up, maybe the October meeting.
I appreciate that, because again, holding off, holding off a few months to have a meeting just because we didn't have data to come here and say, you know, this isn't that incident, this incident, and that's it. Just, it doesn't feel right.
Right.
But thank you.
No, I understand, and I appreciate that, so we'll, we will tackle that.
Okay. Thank you.
Liz Linehan, 405 Sycamore Lane. First of all, thank you all to the board and everyone up there for giving your time to our kids. I really do appreciate that in this meeting. And I know that we're here to really talk about data for school climate, but within school climate also comes all sorts of things regarding the health and safety of our children. So, I figured I would be remiss if I didn't come here, up here and say to you all and to the parents in the audience that we are having a community conversation regarding the opioid epidemic in our children. It's happening September 26th here in Council Chambers. Thank you to the superintendent who is involved in this. I appreciate you being part of the question and answer. It's also going to have Narcan training hidden in plain sight, which is an interactive exercise that helps you find out exactly how your kids are hiding drugs from you. But even more importantly, we talk about how to get health insurance for your children, how to get inpatient or outpatient help if you need it, and so, being that this is the Board of Ed meeting, before that meeting, I wanted to make sure I mentioned something about it. I do have flyers here for all parents that are here tonight, and anyone can contact me for further information. So, anything else you'd like me to put out regarding this? Yes?
I just, is, is anyone from Cheshire Youth Services going to be part, so Michelle Picarella is going to be part of that?
Absolutely. I wouldn't do anything without her. She's like my superhero. But the question and answer session is going to be the Western Connecticut Coalition, Chesapeake Health District, Town of Cheshire Human Services, Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, we actually have the commissioner coming, Wheeler Clinic, the Cheshire Police Department, Cheshire Public Schools, and we even have, we are blessed to have a wonderful young lady who went to Cheshire High School. She is still in her early twenties, and she is a resident in recovery. So, she's going to talk about her experiences in our schools and with opioids, and she's going to, you know, talk directly to the parents on how to get their kids help. So, thank you all for your time. Thank you for allowing me to talk about this.
Oh, and thank you for putting that together, Liz. That's a really important, critical thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Affey, 204 Peck Lane. Good evening. After hearing many of the residents speak in March, in May, and the few people tonight, I hope everyone continues to be an advocate for their child. I have been a fierce advocate for my two boys, and it's never easy, especially when the views are not shared with others sometimes. Never give up, and you will get the answers you need. My main reason for speaking tonight is to thank the staff of Highland School for their care and support they have given to my son these past few months. My son is new to Highland School, and it's been an excellent experience. I think my wife and I were more nervous than my son when he started a few weeks ago. From the moment we started the enrollment process, I have had nothing but good things to say. My son attended the STEM camp in summer and loved it. Principal Jeff made sure he made a connection with my son during the summer. Once school started, my son had a smooth start, and all the students have been a great help to him. He likes his three main teachers, Ms. Cum, Mrs. Zbarth, and Mrs. LaPage. My son gets off the bus every day with audible goodbyes between him and his friends, and is always in a good mood. I thank you for taking care of my son, and I look forward to the great things he's going to do in Cheshire Public Schools. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Affey.
My name is Marty Roush, 33 Ivesville Court, Cheshire. I want to commend the school board, school administration, the staff, and all the students. We have one heck of a school system. Do we have some flaws? Yep. Do we have a few bad apples in a barrel? Yes, we do. Every school system has it. Life is not perfect. The school system's not perfect, but it's damn good. Both my kids went through it. They got excellent educations. Now, my grandkids are in it. They're getting excellent educations. We're putting together a program, Tracy Hussey and Coach Ryan and myself and a few other volunteers, to deal with compassion, happiness, kindness, and gratitude in the schools. We're working on a program. Coach Lee is running it by the students. Mrs. Hussey and I have been talking about it for a number of months. We've had a number of meetings. We had one with Coach Lee a few days ago. He's going to blow by the students to see what vehicle we want to use, but we're definitely going to bring in to solve some of the issues we have. We're never going to have a perfect school system. Life is not perfect. It's never been that way. It won't be that way. Do we have some bullying in the schools? Yep. I was bullied when I was a kid. I survived, and we'll deal with the problems, and hopefully we'll minimize them. Are there some students that shouldn't be in the school system? It's possible. It's not easy for administration to change the student, a student out of school. There are state laws that protect the student. But let's work cooperatively to solve any issues we have, but let's focus on all the positives we have in the school system, deal with the negatives, don't shove them under the rug, but let's work on the positives. We have one heck of a school system. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Roush.
Quick story. When my son was first year, oh, excuse me, Newtown, that's where my kids grew up, we just moved here a few years ago, because my son now lives with his grand, with our grandkids. He went to school, I think it was his first or second day in middle school, came home, got off the bus, told me he was never going back to school because he was never getting on the bus ever again. I called the school, even though he told me, of course, I should not, talked to the assistant principal. I cannot tell you to this day what happened, but I do know, because I drove him to school the next day, I do know he was fine after that. I know that the assistant's principal had these four or five boys plus my son into his office. My son doesn't remember what happened, but whatever happened, the bullying stopped. We got one apology from a kid down the street, none of the others, but it stopped. So, the real question I have is, I know that a few years back, the legislature put in a bullying law, I don't know, they call it something else probably, and I do know from experience with parents and teachers, that it, it actually became a problem if, so that when a, when a parent complained, there was so much you had to do, and so many things you had to go through, and paper you had to fill out, and who you had to report it to, blah, 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 that it no longer was like when my son went to school, where you just went to the assistant principal or the principal, and they took care of it. So, I know that there had been some changes. I know Representative Linehan was here before. Can somebody maybe talk a little bit about what it is like now? I, I will tell you that my granddaughter had an incident in, she goes to Doolittle last year, and it, it was addressed. I don't want to give the impression it wasn't, but they did mention about not reporting it to the state through this law, because, and they explained to my daughter-in-law, they sort of gave her the option if she wanted to, but here's what would happen, and she sort of agreed with me that going through that whole process would be a nightmare for everybody, and not really accomplish what needed to be accomplished, which actually ended up being accomplished by avoiding that whole process. Does that make any sense? So, I know that bullying is a huge issue, so could, you talk a little bit about what the law is like, and I believe there have been some changes, and what the changes are? So, I suspect a lot of people don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And yes, I did understand that, you know, what you had shared there. The, one of the things that we did immediately after the March Forum was make sure our website on our homepage, it has all the information to make, like I said before, either anonymous or direct reports of harassment or bullying. It also outlines, and you're right, that it's a very comprehensive process, and it outlines, you know, the, it's basically like a flow chart of, you know, you interview these people, those people, does it meet the statutory definition of bullying, and that's, that's what's just changed, the, the statutory definition of bullying. Now, that change doesn't go into effect this school year. That goes into effect next year, but the, so this year, you know, it's a verified act is something that's repeated in, in significant acts against a peer or another student, and it, the conclusion of that, if there's a verified act, you know, both parties are notified of, you know, the offender and the, the victim, and they're asked if they would like to come in to meet, like a resolution meeting. And I think, you know, to your point, I was a principal long before there was a formal law, and a lot of the stuff you would just kind of do expeditiously, and now, yeah, you try and do it as expeditiously as you can, but there's a lot of documentation that goes along with that, and, you know, that's, that can be a good thing, it, it can be cumbersome. But all of the, like, the entire flow of all that, and the, you can see the volume of reporting that needs to take place right on our website. It's very easy to, to go through. You can see the, the definition, you can see the, the recording that we have to make, the, all the information we have to take down, and how we come to a conclusion.
I just, my question also is, does it, did it help or hinder? And my impression from some parents, as well as some administrators and teachers, is that there, there's some hindrance there, that, that people and parent, teachers, that people don't want to bring it to the surface, because it, it becomes, it doesn't become like, you know, you sit down and you figure it out, and it's done, and it becomes, you have to report this, you have to talk to someone, you have to, as opposed to...
Right. Yeah, it, you know, I think that you could probably, yeah, the, the question that was raised was, is that a, is all that paperwork, is that process a helper, a hindrance to just boil it down? And, you know, I, I think it probably depends who you ask. What we don't want is for people to feel discouraged about making a report because of paperwork. You're right, I, I definitely, we don't want that. But you don't have to necessarily, as a reporter of an incident, fill out that paperwork. You can simply make a call if that's easier for you, because we, we definitely don't want people, like I said, discouraged from reporting a problem that they're experiencing, so we want to try and make that as easy as possible.
I don't want to keep hammering this, but it's not just filling out the forms. I think it's the whole process that parents have to go through in order to even report that their child has been bullied, and then you have to, you know, they have to have these meetings, and they have to do this, and they have to do that.
Well, the investigation is probably the most comprehensive part of it.
Okay. Whatever you want to call it. And I think that, that teachers even feel like, oh my God, if I report this, it becomes so much bigger than it might just have been, like my son getting bullied on the bus and the assistant taking care of it after a conversation, whereas in this day and age, it would have been, somebody would have had to have reported it, and then we would have had to have discussions, and it would have had to go here, and it would have had to go there, as opposed to...
Yeah, and I, I, part of the issue is too, now that you're labeled a bully, the stakes being raised, when you go to have the conversation, it gets a lot tougher. It's like, you know, speak to my lawyer. Well, you're 10.
That's exactly my point, is that it's, it, you know, there, there are some kids who just need to be told, you can't do this anymore.
Right.
Like the four boys that were told when my son was in middle school. This is not acceptable behavior. We're done. And, and I, I think people are almost afraid, afraid is not the right word, but hesitant to go through this, because even my daughter-in-law, you don't want another kid in school labeled a bully for life at the age of 10, like you just said.
Right.
I mean, so, there's got to be a, a different solution to this problem, because I do, and my daughter-in-law was given the option, but she shouldn't have to be in that position, I think, is my point. And I really don't blame any of you. I blame the legislature for completely screwing this up.
you. I blame the legislature for completely screwing this up.
Liz Lenihan, 405 Sycamore Lane. This is the last meeting I'm ever coming, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you so much. I want to actually thank you for what you said, because a lot of that is the reason why we work to change the law, right? So, we heard, we did a lot of extensive research, and we spoke to a lot of parents, and we spoke to the parents of the bullied children, and we spoke to the parents of the children who were labeled a bully. And we recognized that there was a real concern about what happens after an incident. So, in order to, I don't want to say streamline the process, because that sounds like we want to get to an end result where someone is labeled a bully, but that's not what we're trying to do. Ultimately, we changed the definition of bullying to be, before it had to be over time, a few different incidences. We've now changed it to, it could be one, provided it was so severe. And then, when it's that severe, that it, there's still the investigation, and it's important to note that the investigation, don't think of it like we're police officers, and the investigation is to find out who's the perpetrator and who's going to get in trouble. The purpose of the investigation is to figure out, is the child in crisis? And is that the child who is acting out, or is that the child who is the victim of bullying? Because children act out, and the purpose here is to get them the help that they need. So, in order to do that, we have done a few things where we changed the definition. We've also have more, we're supposed to have more training. It went through a process that now, I've, instead of mandating the training, we've now formed a collaborative. It's one of the few in existence in the country, and this collaborative is going to come out with model school climate policy that can help all schools to figure out how to alleviate the problems that you were just talking about. And, and we're going to come out with multiple recommendations, and it's going to be a continuing, ongoing process. But one thing that did not happen in the last piece of legislation, which is going to be brought up in my committee, the Children's Committee, next year, is that we will be, and I hope that I see some happy faces up here, eliminating the reporting of bullying to the State Department of Education. I feel that that is onerous. I feel that it doesn't achieve a desired outcome, and it does just label a town, a school system, a school, and a child. And these are all things we're trying to get away from. Ultimately, we want all kids to be happy, healthy, and safe in school, and that would require the law allowing our administration and school officials to do that for the kids. So, in these investigations, it is really important that we're not looking to figure out who we point the finger to, but does that child need specialized attention in some way? Is there a mental health aspect that has gone undiagnosed? These are all things that we'll be looking at. So, I'd like to caution that when we talk about safe school climate and bullying, we're not always talking about punishing the offenders. We are talking about getting every single child the help that they need, regardless of where they fall on that spectrum. So, I hope that gives you information, and I'm sorry to take up your time regarding state law, but if anyone has any other questions, they can let me know, or...
Sure. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much.
In terms of the data reporting piece, we did have more incidents of bullying this year. To your point, is that a good thing or a bad thing? You know, did we, did we address more situations? You know, I think that's good. You know, you look through the state data, though, there are a lot of districts in Connecticut with zero.
Zero.
Over several years.
That's a fact. They've said there's been zero incidences of bullying when they have thousands of children in their school system. That's not true. Imagine all those kids who aren't getting the help that they need. So, when, so, the superintendent is correct, that when we look at the data, to look at the number of incidents, that doesn't necessarily mean we have a giant problem. What we need to look at is what we do after with that data and those children. And so, that's why additionally, in the law that I passed, it does require that information be given to each parent at the end of every investigation on, if they do not agree with the findings, that there is a process, that they can go to the State Department of Education, and they can make a, I don't want to say a complaint, but I forgot the word I'm looking for. Where you can, basically complain and say that the outcome is not what we expected, and I feel that my child, whether you are the victim or the perpetrator, that my child is not getting the education that they need because they don't feel safe in school, or they're not getting the services. We have a statute in the state of Connecticut that every child needs to be given adequate schooling. And so, if because of bullying, whether you're a perpetrator, or whether you're a victim, you're not getting the needs, your needs fulfilled in school, you have the right to that. So, we're putting that in plain language form. So, let's say my kid smacked someone around, don't even, but let's say that happens, and I know that my child needed some help, but someone just labeled him as a bully, but when the fact was, is that he was having problems at home, or he was having difficulty understanding, or any, any number of things. And ultimately, someone said, nope, your kid is just a bully, there, you know, and we're going to put it in his file. And I say, I don't think my kid is getting all the services that he needs. I need to now go to the State Department of Education, and here is a very detailed list of what exactly I need to do in order to get him what he needs. That's a really important part, because, because of federal laws, FERPA, they're not really allowed to tell you exactly what's going on. So, so, we're trying to give parents as much information as possible in order to make sure that their kids are getting the education that they rightfully deserve. Does that explain things well?
I believe it does, yes.
Okay, I'll be quiet. Okay.
Mr. Perugini.
Quick question for you, and I do want to say thank you for your help. I know...
Thank you.
Earlier this year, you reached out, a couple of us talked to you, and you've been definitely a voice for this issue in Hartford, and, you know, some of our, it's not your fault, but some of our limitations are some of this legislation. One of the biggest frustrations that I've heard from a few folks, I think one of the parents is in the audience tonight that had this situation, which is, whether it's a one-time incident or repeated incidents over time, the question I get asked is, well, if this keeps happening, why is this kid still in the same class with my son or daughter? Why won't the school move the kid to a different class? It seems like sometimes, you know, the victim, you know, is still left to answer questions. So, I didn't look at the new law. I know you gave a base analysis, but will there be at least some relief for victims that report the issue, at least be able to told what action has been taken?
So, FERPA still requires that, in some aspects, you can't tell them that actions are taken. That's the reason why the superintendent, please correct me if I'm wrong, had it put on the website that this is the flow chart of the way things go, because it's not specific to a certain investigation, but you know that it has to take these steps. So, law dictates, federal law dictates that I can't tell you what Johnny has to do in his particular situation, but I can tell you that we've done everything under the law to do that. That's why then, that plain language form that says, if you, if you're not satisfied with that, you have the right, under the state constitution, to get a fair, or a good education, and if you feel that your child is not getting that because they're afraid to go to school or what have you, there is a way to contact the State Department of Ed and, and appeal that decision. With that said, another law that I passed this year, and actually has to do with sexual harassment in the workplace, it requires that if someone comes forward regarding someone harassing them in the workplace, and they are, and ultimately, the victim is taken out of the workplace, and the perpetrator is left there, in order to do that, they have to sign off on that, so that we're not putting roadblocks in front of people to coming forward as victims, right? It's called immediate corrective action, and sometimes immediate corrective action is done to the detriment of someone who is claiming harassment. One of the things that we are looking at in the collaborative is how does that, how would that work in a school setting? And that's, and so, I can't guarantee that there's legislation that's going to come out of that, but, but to your point, we have a parent who can now go to SDE and knows how to do that because of this law, but what happens then if that child, the victim, is taken out of the classroom and put into another class, instead of the kid who is harassing them taken out? So, we're going to be looking at the law that we pass there, how that works within our education statutes, and while I can't promise an outcome, I can promise you that that is something that the collaborative is interested in looking at. You're welcome.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
And I just think, you know, for everyone here, obviously, there's a lot that is going on at the state level that impacts us at the town level. And so, not to sic everybody on Liz, but I mean, certainly, to the extent that, you know, these are things that are being decided at a different level than at the local level, you should, you know, get involved and really sort of make your voices heard at the state level, too. And I'm sure Liz would like to hear from you on that. Thanks, Liz.
Hi.
Fiona Pearson, 100 Strathmore Drive. And I just wanted to thank you for that and provide some context, because I was at the last forum on, on climate, and at that time, I did reveal that I was on the task force for sexual assault and bullying and campus climate at CCSU, which had been dealing with some very high-profile cases the past couple of years, and the issues that we were addressing in higher ed. I mean, one was that we don't have any bullying processes, basically, in higher ed, and that's something we don't have in the workplace, and we know that this is, this is not just K through 12, when we're talking about these issues of bullying. We're dealing with this in higher ed, we're dealing with this in our workplaces. And I know I have a colleague, Kathy Hermes, in the History Department at Central, who had been working on state-level legislation for bullying in the workplace. She had a close friend commit suicide as a result of workplace bullying, and so, it was something she was very passionate about. That legislation has not gone anywhere. But, in terms of placing context, one of the problems we've had in higher ed, and what we see in the workplace, is there is no process, right? With K through 12, at least there is a process. It may be an onerous process, a burdensome process, and I think K through 12 is figuring that out, because there are problems. There are issues of potential silencing and people not coming forward, and we see that with, with sexual assault and other types of issues. You know, once you have a process in place, then people are less likely to step forward, because they don't want to have to deal with going through that entire process, which creates a whole other problem, these unintended consequences, right? So, I just wanted to provide that, that larger context, and it's something that I think we are all figuring out as a culture at this moment in time and history. And I thank you for the steps you are trying to take at this moment, but I just wanted to thank you, because there are the two sides. I mean, you end up with what we had up at Central when there is no process, but now we're dealing with when the process is too onerous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to reiterate, though, like, I don't want people walking away thinking that, that, you know, the process is going to be too much. Please reach out to your principal if there's an issue in your school, or me, or again, Marlene. If there is an issue, reach out, we'll walk you through it, discuss it with you. But, you know, don't, please don't stay silent because you're concerned about the process.
Just, just to be clear, it was sort of a choice given to my daughter-in-law, so I presume she's not the only one who's been given this choice. I, I think that if it, the problem hadn't been solved, then she might have come back and said, you know what? Let's do the process. But because the problem has been solved, and everybody seems to be okay, then, so, is that not within the...
Unfortunately, I don't know the individual circumstances, and even if I did, I couldn't comment on them. But, we don't have a choice about following the law. So, I'm not sure maybe what nuance, I mean, you and I can have off the, you know, record conversation about, maybe to get better understanding, but we ultimately have to follow the law. And the law is, when somebody makes a report about bullying, this is the protocol you have to follow.
Yeah. Maybe because she heard me say, don't do that.
Maybe.
For those who don't know, I'm Rich Gussenberg. I was a principal for 30-something years. We talk about bullying or not bullying, but in reality, when you're dealing in a school, there's a range of issues. And I think part of the complexity here is that people automatically make an assumption that if two children are having an issue or a problem, that it's an issue or a problem of bullying. And there's a lot of gray areas. So, that's why it is not uncommon at all to come into a school, to talk to a principal, to say, here's an issue or a problem that I'm dealing with, and it may not reach the level of the definition of bullying as the state defines it. That doesn't mean that you don't deal with it, and the principals do deal with it, as they have for many, many years. If it does cross over that line, and the parent does want to pursue it, then there is very specific law that is in place. I think it's, it's something where the, the parents that are involved and the administration have to talk and communicate to one another, and really clearly define what's going on. In fact, a few years ago, we had somebody from the State Department of Education come down, and she said, I prefer that you not use the word bullying when you're talking to the parents, because right away, that sets up a certain sense in their mind of, of what's going on here. Define what's happening. Define what's going on, rather than just put the label on it right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gussenberg. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Jamie Ferguson, 105 Copper Beach Drive. I was wondering if you could just take a minute and maybe talk about the situations when students, there is student conflict. I mean, they could bicker in the hall about anything, or when those, how do the administrators or the principals or guidance in the school help students resolve their conflicts before it gets to this reporting stage? Just, I mean, once we're at the high school, you kind of, you know, trust. We don't know what actually goes on there, so, if you could just share a little insight, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks.
To your point, and I think to what Mr. Gussenberg was saying, that there's a, you know, there's just developmentally different needs from a, you know, six-year-old to a 16-year-old. And so, depending on the nuances of the situation, it could look significantly different. Most of the time, though, at, at the end of the day, when there are two parties involved in a situation, and there's a back and forth, which is more often than not the case, when there's some sort of back and forth, we work with each individual, often individually, and then collectively to try and resolve the problem. Depending on the situation, there's communication between those people that are trying to help resolve the issue with the, the students, which are more often than not the principal or our mental health team. And I, I hate to miss an opportunity to, again, thank the board. This year, we added three school psychologists. We've been, at the beginning of the, you know, years ago, when we identified social-emotional learning and complex thinking, our ratio of students to mental health providers was near last in the DURG. I think there was one school system that had even more students per mental health provider than we did. Over the last couple of years, through the budget process, we've added five mental health providers. We're now in the middle of the DURG. Much better, DURG is our district reference group. It's like communities like Cheshire, Glastonbury, Newtown, Simsbury, Madison, you know, there are 21 schools that they, 21 districts they look at, like us. And so, with those people in place, we try and resolve situations with students, and, you know, contact parents. Now, we also may be contacting classroom teachers, playground aides, lunch aides, a coach. It really depends on, like I said before, kind of the, the nature of the situation and who's involved, but generally, we're trying to resolve the, the issue with the students. Now, if there's a, a clear infraction of some sort, like a clear misbehavior, like a theft, or anything physical involved, like, the, the resolution process looks a lot different. You know, initially, you know, there, there are consequences in place for whoever, you know, initiated the misbehavior, and then nevertheless, what we're focused on very much now is restorative practices. So, you made a mistake, how do we make it right? And we work with the victim there and the perpetrator to try and, you know, have some sort of restitution and our closure to the situation, and not just, you know, all right, we're gonna, you know, give you three days of ISS and call it a day, and just hope that things don't go south from here. things don't go south from here. We try and get the parties together again at that point and and resolve it even if there is a disciplinary consequence. So I hope that gave you some background.
Good evening, Sam Rosenberg, 299 Greenbrier Drive. There was a saying that was going around that you can't bloom until you maslow. And I want to make two comments. I want to commend you because Cheshire has always been at the forefront in regards to being restorative. You've always had responsive classroom before it became popular to do. So I have three children. Sixteen years ago, we moved here and my daughter, the oldest, is biracial, so she's half-black and Asian with a Jewish father. And there were incidences that occurred, name-calling and so on. But I responded as a parent and asked the administration, please handle this. And they took it upon themselves to have restorative conversations. So I want to thank the principal back then. And then it occurred again after elementary school and I don't think you were there yet, Mr. Solan, at the high school. But quick name-calling, so to speak, called the administration, handled it. So she's bloomed because you were able to, in every situation, allow her to grow and learn from it as well, even though in my opinion she was the victim, but that's not how she saw it. She learned how to handle it and right now she actually works for the state capital of New York for Cuomo. So apparently, politics came into play afterwards. I have two other ones now in the system and, you know, they're able to be assertive and solve problems on their own because I I have to say, it's because we've always been ahead of the game with these practices. So and I just got the SBAIC scores today and I want to congratulate you because we moved from ten to five in our DIRG. So therefore, we're doing something right because we know how to maslow before they can bloom. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I just want to add that I also, and our staff absolutely understands, not every child has the capacity to be assertive all the time, particularly if they're going through a difficult time. And sometimes they they haven't shared it with mom or dad, what's going on. Be clueless, best parent in the world, you don't know. And it's just the nature of kids sometimes, you know, and they have to, we have to, you know, we work on identifying when kids are acting different and how to address those kids in the classroom, you know, how to pull them aside, try and find out what's going on. Sometimes it's, you know, there is a significant peer issue, sometimes, you know, we lost the big game yesterday, or my goldfish died, or some other life event, you know, and but we also appreciate, as I said, that not every child has that capacity to be a strong self-advocate one hundred percent of the time. Not every adult has that capacity. So, you know, we do encourage you, you know, it's it's, as a parent, it's wicked hard, I'm a dad too, you know, to to say, when do you tell the kid to rub dirt on it and get back in or when do you reach out? And if you have a question, that's those mental health providers I talked about, are there, reach out to them and ask. You know, it's way more effective than, you know, just just losing a lot of sleep over it. So we encourage you to reach out, please.
Joe Bango, 171 Cornwall Avenue. I agree with you, Mr. Solan, one of the difficulties is is that in educating young children and in the incidences of bullying, we have to teach them how to interact in society and how to be able to deal with each other. Victims have to know how to be able to address a situation if it gets out of control, who they can reach to go ahead and and deal with the with the situations. But one of the questions that I had for the for the board here is, was there going to be any type of mechanism that would make it easy for parents to be able to know besides of the incidents that you say are reported to the state? You mentioned the data is available and there's a difference between data being available and data being easily available. I know that with the incidences that that my children had experienced in Cheshire, that it was exceptionally difficult to go ahead and get any kind of information as to what was happening. A number of years ago, and I don't want to rehash this type of situation, but it was a situation where my son was threatened by three students who said they were going to bring knives hidden in a backpack and brought to school. My son didn't receive any counseling, I had no support from the principal, and when I tried to reach the board at that time, I had, they went completely radio silent. I had to go through a number of Freedom Information requests and I had to go to Hartford to go ahead and go to the FOI Commission. And the assistant superintendent at the time had stipulated that he had investigated all the schools in the district and he said he found no acts of bullying, no threats of violence and no acts of violence. And yet there was a report that was filed with the state and so there had to be some antecedent basis for that. My question is, will you make it available easily so parents can see that there have been a number of threats of violence or incidents that have happened that they can see what's happening and at what school in the in the respective district?
The answer to that unfortunately isn't black and white. Because of FERPA, I can't make personally identifiable information available. And when there's basically five or less incidents within a school, which really is most of our elementary schools, I can't make that data available because it could become personally identifiable. It's the same protocol, like if you look up state test results on the State Department of Ed website, for districts, oftentimes you'll see like an asterisk next to a subgroup because they have too few students that they won't report it because the kids in that building could be personally identifiable at that point. So, you know, when there's a certain volume, I can present information, but it has to meet that threshold, which, you know, again, it's not, it's not a great answer when you want to know everything, but law prohibits us from sharing everything.
Then why is it that I can go to the police department and get a copy of a report where the names are redacted so that it's publicly available?
That's the police department, they're under a different set of rules than the federal education rights and privacy. You know, I, they play by different rules than we do. The the federal government has different laws for law enforcement than they do for educational entities.
Okay, then let me ask you this then, then could your, can you go ahead and report on the Board of Ed website if the police are called to a given school? When I talked to Chief Dreyf, I was asking him a number of questions that several administrators had expressed to me that the police could elect to file what they called, as I recall, it was something called a double zero. If they didn't want to file a report, they didn't have to, but yet the police may have been called to a given school. Can police response be reported?
I would talk, you should talk to Chief Dreyf about that. Like that's something, we have police in our school all the time, we have two school resource officers in our schools all the time. So we don't, we don't generally call them like to respond to an incident as much anymore. They're there already. Most of the time, they're at the high school, middle school and our alternative high school, but they do visit other schools periodically. We, you know, it's it's very rare that we would call the police for an incident. Again, given the rarity, it would be personally identifiable. Now, you might have better luck with Chief Dreyf who doesn't have Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, that he doesn't have to worry about that.
Okay, then how would a parent, how would parents know if, let's say, there was a weapon that was brought to school and that might have affected things in that particular school that would affect their children? How would parents know that?
They may not.
They may not.
In some situations, yeah.
Okay.
They may not. If if it impacts other kids in the room, if if a weapon were ever brandished in a classroom, then yeah, we would notify those those parents. It was a pretty public act because, you know, obviously, we we value the mental health and support of all the kids in there. But I'll tell you, I've worked in the district for fifteen years. Incidents where somebody's actually like brandished a weapon or something, I can't remember one.
Well, I didn't specifically say.
I don't know. I know, I know, I know you didn't and that, but I'm just trying to come up, come up with a potential scenario where I could contact multiple people under the law.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, if I could just ask one other question, my wife just asked, mentioned, does FERPA, FERPA apply to SROs?
It depends on the situation. If it was an arrest, they're not an agent of the school system. They're working in an educational setting, but they they can't disclose a lot of information. But if there was an arrest, it would still fall under juvenile protection. They they don't publish names of juveniles or anything like that, but the FERPA generally doesn't cover a law enforcement officer in a school setting.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Gary Ruchini, 27 East Ridge Court. So I just want to make, well, one comment, I have a son at Chapman, phenomenal school, you guys are doing a great job. But I think more importantly, when we, when I came here tonight, I was expecting some, I think some color around some of the bullying and school climate numbers, and I haven't heard too much of that. So easy question, you talked about the number of incidences. I just want to know if you can give me some tangible activities actually happening, you know, at the ground level to help combat this.
Sure, absolutely. First and foremost, we're focused on really two programs that dictate our culture in our schools. One, you know, you've heard the responsive classroom conversation, that really is at the core of how we treat each other in our schools, whether it's kids communicating with other kids or adults and kids communicating. Responsive classroom is at the heart of really our edu- our educational program at the elementary levels. What we've focused a lot on at the middle and high school over the last year, really, we started last year, is restorative practices. And I talked a little bit about, you know, when somebody's been wronged, how do we make it right? And so really, it's about empathy building and supporting kids and making good decisions and then how do you navigate things when mistakes are made? And so, you know, the the restorative practices is something that we've been very much focused on at the middle and high school level in particular. As a matter of fact, our showcase meeting that we had last year for the middle school was on restorative practices and it was very comprehensive and and very good. That should be available on our website. I know we're having some difficulty right now with our, the digital platform we were using to store the old, our old videos in the district, our old meeting videos and things like that. So we're switching over to YouTube. So stay tuned for an update on YouTube CPS TV.
Can I entice anyone else to come up and speak to the board or?
Since you asked. Judy Villa, 1020 Danard Place. Once upon a time, I was on the Board of Education in Cheshire and once upon a time, I was on the town council in Cheshire. And for twenty-five years, I taught at Quinnipiac University and I dealt with bullying and I dealt with kids who didn't feel good about themselves. As Fiona Pearson mentioned, it trickles and gushes uphill just as well as downhill. And so many students came with issues that hadn't been resolved in the elementary schools and the middle schools and the high schools. And it wasn't just academic issues, it was social issues. And I did some presentations for some organizations nationally that dealt with learning issues for students. And I entitled my particular talk, Practicing Without a License, because basically, that's what I was doing. I was a professor in an English classroom, teaching English and composition and literature, but also in my last five years, I was an administrator and I was responsible for hiring, training, supervising, and sometimes firing student tutors and also counseling academically students who were having difficulty adjusting to testing, adjusting to classroom situations, adjusting to being a college student. And so I had a lot of experience with students and when I did my workshop on practicing without a license, it was true because many times, students would come in and say they were having difficulty with tests, they were having difficulty studying, and when you scratched the surface, they would reveal that their problems were really not so academic, they were really emotional problems. They were dealing with family issues, they were dealing with boyfriend and girlfriend issues, they were doing, do, I'm sorry, dealing with the pressures to drink, not so much opioids, but now that's horrible and it's killing our society as we know. It's not easy to be a student, it's not easy to be a parent, it's not easy to be a teacher, it's not easy to be an administrator, and I can tell you, it's not easy to be a Board of Education member either. And we've become a society that looks to scapegoat each other. And I really and truly commend you for being here because it means you care desperately and you want to start on the right foot or you want to help people who haven't been there yet with your own experiences. But I would challenge you to buy into that kindness and that collaborative model and don't make fun of that social emotional learning because that's really what it is. It allows people to be comfortable with themselves and not be frightened of being a human being and that opens up the whole world of being a lifelong learner. Yes, we still teach subject matter, yes, we care desperately about our scores, but we care much more about people becoming self-contained but compassionate and loving human beings. We can't continue to be playing the blame game in our society. We really have to dig in together. Thank you.
Hello, Allison Fisher, 95 Bellamy Road. This is my first meeting of any sort and moved here about a year ago with my family. We wanted our girls to grow up in Cheshire and and go to the schools here. So I have some data questions, I'm a data person, so I hope that's all right. So I did look at the website as you were speaking about the survey data being available, so thank you for that and there's some great visual on there for everybody. But I did notice that the surveys were for parents and kids, which is excellent, but I was wondering if there was a way or if you do already compile information from teachers and staff as well and where that fits in?
Sorry, we do survey staff as well and we review that with our schools internally, but you know, that there's no, it's not secretive or anything, I can publish anything that's not personally identifiable.
Is that like compiled with the family data, is what, like do you look at it holistically?
Yeah, we look at, we look at the three different surveys.
Okay.
At each building level.
Okay, so we could request the staff data as well?
Yeah, like I, yeah, that'll, I can put that on the website as long as it's not personally identifiable.
Yeah, I would love to see that.
Yep, sure.
Thank you. I also, I have one more.
Sure.
And for the Safe School Climate Report, I noticed that that was dated July 2018. So how often are they updated and also how is it a So, how often are they updated, and also, how is it assessed in terms of compliance?
Right, so, that's updated annually. The individual buildings have, they're in the process of finalizing theirs, they meet with their individual building teams, and then we pull them all together. Those would be published on the website first, and then we will review that at the district level with the district team. And then, publish the district one.
Okay, and then, are they assessed for compliance throughout the year?
Yes, yeah, the, the meetings occur at the building level multiple times a year, as they do at, at central office level.
Okay, are you, are you finding that there's like, a hundred percent compliance with everything, or?
Um, it's not necessarily a compliance, as, as much as it is, sometimes there'll be adjustments. So, for example, you know, last year, there were more adjustments in the, in the plan. It's, it's more fluid than it is like, static, this is all we're gonna do, and, you know, sometimes, we make adjustments. Sometimes, you know, PTA will say, we have this incredible, you know, organization that, that does X, Y, or Z for the school, and that might be filtered into the program, or, you know, they decide, well, this, this program that we were going to do, the person got sick, and they can't, so you, you pull it out. So, it is really kind of fluid, but it's really based on, try and look at the data and say, what supports might our kids need, and how are we gonna do that? Formulate a plan, and make adjustments throughout the year as, as needed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Jean Kaplan, I live at forty Suragamille Drive in Cheshire. I just want to comment, last couple of months ago, I was here, and I had some serious issues with my daughter being bullied, and I just want to put a compliment out to Superintendent Solan and stellar new Principal Amy O'Brien. I'm very happy with the outcomes, I think the school system has gone above and beyond helping my daughter get into the sixth grade easily. There's full transparency with the teachers, and I just really want to say thank you, and I appreciate everybody on the board and all those teachers and principal.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm really glad to hear that things have worked out so well. Thank you.
Joe Bango, one-seventy-one Cornwall again. We were talking about issues about student bullying, I wanted to know whether or not you had any programs in place to deal with teacher or staff bullying. Is there a whistleblower protection, for example, for teachers? Let's say a teacher is new to the district, sees an incident that feels that needs to be reported, but is strongly encouraged not to report it, maybe they're up for tenure or what have you. Do you have anything protecting the staff?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Bango, I, I would have to review our policy around that. It's not something that, I mean, any workplace has some, you know, professional conflict of some sorts, not, I don't remember any rising to the point that there were real formal complaints made against other staff members. But I, I'll review our policy around that, I'll be hon, I do not know, I, I don't recall a formal, formal like whistleblower element to our policy, but I, I, I could have to look it up, to be honest with you, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Understood. It was an incident that was reported to me that happened over at Darcy School, where the staff member had wanted to go ahead and make a report, and they were strongly encouraged not to, and that's why I wanted to ask if there was something.
I, I don't know the circumstances or details around that, I couldn't really comment, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seeing no one else lined up at the podium, I am going to ask my fellow board members whether anyone would like to comment or say anything to wrap up our forum. Mr. Grippo.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We've been here about an hour fifteen now, I think, if I'm reading that clock correctly. My eyesight's getting a little bad in my old age, I guess. This went a little different than what I was expecting this evening. The prepared statement I have is a little more conciliatory than how I actually feel. But I'll read it nevertheless, because I promised my wife I would be nice tonight, so. I would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight, whether it was to speak your mind, or just listen and process what has happened since the last forum eight months ago. Much of the infrastructure you heard about tonight are things that were in place last year. Most of it has been working quite successfully. I can't speak more highly of the excellent mental health staff that we have working throughout this excellent school system. More often than not, our children's needs are met on a daily basis with great care and professionalism. Many of the tools which we use have been demonstrated to be effective. This is supported by the data presented here tonight, as well as academic literature. We still have a disconnect, however. Since the spring, I have pored over our existing policies, looking to where we, as a board, have failed you. It seems to come down to three things: accountability, responsiveness, and transparency. In this instance, I speak of our current bullying policy. Earlier this summer, Mrs. Vadi called a special policy meeting to discuss this very topic, topic. For an hour, we had the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Solan and our own attorney. Many of the ideas that I had, that I had brought to improve things turned out to be illegal under the law known as FERPA. The meeting ended, and I still remain frustrated. I read again and again our thirteen-page bullying policy to try, to try boiling down the point of failure. To me, it was fairly, a fairly simple thing. Among their many duties, the principal, the Safe School Climate Specialist, as noted in our policy, gathers all incident data from their staff, and that data is supposed to be consolidated in a timely manner by central office. Using the terms of operational management, I deem this to be called a bottleneck. And it's one that has yet to be solved. Information that is presented to us is done on an annual basis, and a lot of us, we've had discussions about wanting this on, on a more regular basis, so that it can be more publicly disseminated. I take Mr. Solan at his word that he will continue to improve, to improve this process. After all, as board members, we are duly responsible to write and approve policy. We cannot execute it. That is Mr. Solan and his staff's job. I pledge to you to continue to hold Mr. Solan accountable, but also work with him to improve both real and perceived weaknesses in policy procedure. Thank you for coming tonight. I am always available to talk. Please continue to reach out, because it's because of you that we are here tonight. You demanded it, and you demand more of us. Do not remain silent, and use the tools that we have to help improve your children's experience in our school system. I am here to serve you, the great citizens of Cheshire, and ensure that our beloved children learn in a safe and welcoming environment. I hope that you all have an excellent school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo. Ms. Harrigan.
Hi, I also thank everybody who came out tonight. It's great to see this kind of interest in our schools. And I would encourage people to go out there and, and do a quick Google search, some quick research on this responsive classroom and restorative practice approach, approaches that we've been talking about tonight, because it truly shows the sort of, what we're doing in our schools to support our children, to support our students, and this is our, this is the way we're moving forward with the social-emotional learning that we talk about. I know that Superintendent Solan has been high on message for the whole four years that I've been on the Board of Ed, about our two overarching objectives, the complex learning and the social-emotional learning. And I just hope people can see the preventive measures that we've supported over the, the past several years to create a school environment where students feel safe and supported, because that's what it's all about. The May eighth follow-up forum was meant to show some of these initiatives that are happening in our schools, and that came from the students themselves in many instances. The Not on My Bus Initiative, the Unified Sports, the Challenge Day, the Peer Health Educators, all of these programs that come organically, in many instances, from the students themselves, and, and these are examples from all grade levels as well. All of that feeds into our, what we're trying to do with the social-emotional learning. So, I would just encourage people to take a look, and if, for some real understanding of what it is that we're trying to do, and why the responsive classroom and the restorative practices are approaches that we here at Cheshire Public Schools buy into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Mr. Guss, oh. Mr. Gussenbergh.
There you go. I'll be brief. I just want to stress the word communication. Over the years, I've seen lots and lots of issues. I've seen, I talked to parents who were very upset, their child got off the bus, their child had an issue in school, maybe things went on day after day, and eventually, I'd walk in the office, and there would be a nine, nine o'clock, two-page email that had been sent by mom or dad at two o'clock in the morning, because they were so upset and so angry. And, you know, sometimes your first response is to send an email back, and I'd stop and say, no, that's not how we communicate. It's essential, when your child gets off that bus, or when your child comes home and says, I'm having a problem, that you immediately, not only talk it through with them, but contact the school. Let the teachers know what's happening, let the principals know what's happening. Two-way communication will solve many, many of the problems, before they ever get to the point where we have to label bullying or harassment. So, it's important that you really work at that two-way communication. I was very lucky, Mr. Solan and I got to go around to all the schools the first day of school, and I got to see the wonderful job that all of our principals and teachers did, in opening up school, and greeting the students, and doing a countdown, and yelling Happy New Year with weird hats on, and all sorts of things. They go out of their way to try to create a very positive and supportive environment in the schools. I've had a chance to talk with several of the principals, and they stress to me over and over again, that they are dedicated to good communication. So, I just stress, you know, if an issue comes up, and it's going to, when you look at the, the data, you'll find that ninety, ninety-five percent of the students are reporting that they're having a very positive experience in our schools. But even one student who's not is too much, and it's our job to make sure that doesn't happen. So, I, I urge you to open up those lines of communication, I urge the administration and the teachers to do the same, to sit down face-to-face and talk through issues. You won't always leave happy, sometimes, and I've been in this situation, a situation that seems very clear from the point of view of one child or one parent, when administrator starts investigating, isn't quite so clear. Sometimes it's muddy, sometimes it's, there's more than one side to a story, and not everyone may walk out of the process completely satisfied, including the administrator. But, as long as we keep talking, as long as we keep focusing on what's best for the children, then we'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gussenbergh. Ms. Vadi.
I completely agree. Communication is key to everything, and I appreciate you saying that. And I do want to thank everyone for being here, like, wholeheartedly. We are really here because of you. Thank you for advocating for your children, thank you for telling us what we're doing right, what we're not doing right, coming up with suggestions and ideas, because it's collaborative. We're a community, and I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done over the last four years, and, you know, coming to these forums and speaking and letting us know, you know, what's happening in your lives, in your students' lives, what you're hearing, and we can only be better when we know what you know, so thank you for that. And I want to thank, you know, Representative Ms. Lenahan especially, thank you for coming tonight, because I think we're lucky as a community to have someone that's so involved, who's coming here to our Board of Ed meeting and forum, and trying to explain to everyone what she's doing in the, at the state level, and also, you know, what, what we can do to maybe help her at the state level, and try to understand the issues better. So, you really provided a lot of clarity tonight, and I appreciate you speaking out, so thank you for that. Thank you for every single one of you that stood, you know, stood up and talked tonight, and everyone that's here listening. And I do want to say, you know, I'm only on the board for a couple more months, but I am committed to continue to work in policy, as, you know, Mr. Grippo mentioned, he brought a policy forward, we discussed it at the end of the summer, and we are gonna continue to work on that. I know our attorney had to go back and look at some of those issues, and there's new laws, so we're gonna be looking at that. And to the extent that we can do, I can help formulate new policy while I'm still on the board, I'm, I'm, I'm still committed to doing that. But I did want to say thank you to everyone for coming out, and I agree, continue to communicate, continue to advocate, and hopefully, this has been informative, and if it hasn't been, and there's something else you wanted to hear from us, you know, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Ms. Sobel.
Many things I'm about to say are just going to be parroting what other people have said, but I did want to thank everybody for coming out. I especially do want to echo what Nita just said about community and, and this being a collaborative process, and it is really nice to hear things that we're doing well, and it's really nice to have solid suggestions and pointed questions about information that you would like. It makes it easier if we know information that, that, that you're looking for. I did just want to say something, so, thank you all, and continue to, to do that and bring forth suggestions and criticisms. I did just want to make a quick comment with what Mr. Grippo and, and Ms. Vadi had said. I sometimes wonder about communication, because there are many times I feel that I am not on the same board as some other people. The policy meeting that we had was very good, the attorney pointed out a lot of things, as Mr. Grippo said, that were illegal, and also pointed out many of the things that we are already doing. They are already in place. I disagree that our school, our building, bless you, our Safe School Committees in the buildings are a bottleneck. They're not. Every building needs to bring their information forward, and to echo a little bit about what Mr. Gussenbergh said, not every instance rises to the level of bullying. And one of the things that it, that the teachers and the administrators and the people in the buildings need to do is work with that to see. And communication in that regard is also especially important. So, again, I just wanted to thank you all for, for coming out tonight, and while I only have a couple more months on the board, I too look forward to helping in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Mr. Pear, Jane.
I'll keep it short, Chairman, Chairperson Helen. Also want to echo, thank you for anyone that came out tonight, as well as those came out back in March, and have been speaking with us ever since then. The highlight for me in this meeting was hearing Ms. Kaplan's issue, more or less being resolved. I know we spoke at length, so, that's what I was referring to earlier, I didn't want to call you out, because, you know, it's a personal thing, but, and that's the kind of things that I'm looking for as a board, and I understand that the school district, we do have an outstanding staff. I know Mr. White indicated earlier that, you know, any organization, you know, it's gonna have its share of, you know, folks that maybe not doing a good job, but by and large, I know our staff is doing the best they can, within the guidelines set forth by law, by our policy, and, and just what we can say and can't say. So, you know, kudos to everyone for, for making all these positive changes. You know, being a data guy, I would say the data portion of this meeting was underwhelming for me. And I mean my expectations, not that's a bad thing, but, you know, I sit here six months later, I still know what the incidents are by school, and I should be able to know that without knowing who, what, when, or how. So, I'm still looking forward from the school safety committee's metrics that, you know, will get filtered to some level of data the board can review without violating law, it's possible. So, I'll keep looking for positive trends there, and I'm looking to see over time if the feedback we're getting back from the community, the parents, and our staff, matches up to what we're seeing on the metrics, and we'll continue to improve, but I do want to say this, by no means is this over. But I do want to say this, by no means is this over. Meaning that this collaboration that the town has shown us, I mean, for myself as a board, I will tell you, in all the years I've been on this board, it's, and as serious as some of these issues can be for, for all of us, the fact that you folks, and as well those that are not here tonight, came out in several meetings, you were not finger-pointing, you were not name-calling, you were not really lambasting anybody, pitches of pitchforks and torches, so to speak. You were very clear that you saw an issue, you're looking for help, you had an idea, and you want to work collaboratively with the board. That's huge. I will tell you, a lot of school districts don't have that luxury of such involvement. So again, I'm sure over time we'll step into a rhythm on how to report this and gather feedback, but I echo what our board, my fellow colleagues said, is, let's keep the conversation going, let's keep the action happening, and if folks feel that things are not getting addressed, let us know. I will tell you that you let us know, and I would hope that, you know, the perception out there has changed a little bit, that the board did listen, and more importantly, administration has heard you, and there's some tangible action. That being said, because we as a board got some links to some data Friday for this meeting, I know we didn't go over in detail today, but I would ask Superintendent Solan, what's your best way to do this? I would love to get those links out that we can share to the public, either via Power School or some other method, just so that, you know, as a follow-up. And I will tell you, that's one of the criticisms I get as a board member is, you have a meeting, we never hear what happens, there's no report that goes out. It's truth is somewhere in between, but I would really like to get this information out there. And instead of just saying it's on the school website, you know, maybe an email you sent us, we detailed what it was, a little explanation might help. That way, in time, if folks have questions about some of those data points or the bullying policy, how to report incident, if you come to a board meeting, we'd be happy to address your question. So I hope we can start some kind of recap tonight, just to refresh what was discussed and what the resources are out there. So I'll look to your guidance for that. But I do want to thank everyone, and, you know, let's keep the positive method going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pearjean. I, there's not much more that I could say. One of the things that I am, you know, very happy about is that, in fact, you are all here. We are, there's a much, I'd say, more positive, as Mr. Pearjean mentioned, a much more positive feel to this forum than prior ones. And I hope that that is an indication that the community is recognizing that we are, you know, the board and the district is taking seriously, has taken this issue seriously, will continue to take it seriously. And, you know, we really do want to work together as a team, all of us. I think it's, this issue is not just a school issue, it's not just a parent issue. This is a community issue, that we all have to work together to kind of change, I think, you know, the overall feel of our community. I mean, we have a great town, we have great people here, and we have to stay really positive. And I think when we do that and we exhibit that kind of positive interaction, it filters down to our children. And, you know, we are their role models. And for all of those who, you know, you know, want to focus on the things that divide us, I would urge us to, you know, have more kinds of interactions like this, where it is really productive and, you know, as everyone else here has said, stay in touch. We, you know, we can't get anything done without understanding where you all are coming from and, and keeping the lines of communication open. So I'm not going to belabor this point, because it's been, you know, a little bit of a long night, but I think that is it. Mr. Solan, did you have anything to add or?
Sure. Real quick, again, I also appreciate everybody coming out, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the, you know, incredible efforts of our administrative team and, you know, our teachers who work incredibly hard and, you know, I include them, but a lot of the unstructured time that our kids have are with paraprofessionals and teacher assistants who work also very hard to try and, you know, I, I have two little boys at home. It's a tough job officiating between those two. And, you know, they're out in unstructured time when kids are playing games and things, and we work to train them, and we appreciate their feedback and the effort that they've made too, to try and ensure that all of our kids have a positive and productive experience, whether it be in the classroom or in some of that unstructured time that can be a little bit more challenging. So like I said, I just wanted to recognize the efforts of all the staff in the district, not, you know, and not just that. You know, I know our administrative team is, is very proud, our staff is very proud of the academic success we had. I know somebody mentioned it, actually, we're fifth in the state of Connecticut on our achievement testing. We don't chase test results. You know, that's not what we're here for, but for our kids to show that sort of success is very impressive. And, you know, focused on social-emotional learning and complex thinking, our kids do great things in the classroom and out. So I also appreciate our kids. They really lead our school system, and they can teach us a lot too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to acknowledge, because I forgot to do this, I think it was Mr. Roush?
Yes.
I want to just say, I'm really cur, I'd like to hear more about your initiative as it, you know, takes shape and takes form, and I thank you for doing that with Ms. Hossi and the students. So, you know, I think, you know, we have more like that, where we're focusing on being kind and grateful and spreading that kind of message. I really, at some point, you know, as it takes form, I'd love to hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll invite you to attend the Happiness Club.
I'll be there.
This is a spin-off from the Happiness Club. The Happiness Club is meeting tomorrow night, for those of you who want to attend, at the Woodbridge Public Library. We have Dr. Bernie Segal is going to speak to us. And it's a wonderful organization, it's all free. We have classes on Monday night, and I welcome anybody who wants to come. If you're not happy, it's a good place here. If you're happy, it's an even better place. [laughter]
What time, Marty?
It starts at six, it ends at seven forty-five at the Woodbridge Public Library.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Sobel, do I have a second? Mr. Grippo, all in favor? It is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you again for coming tonight.